I'd like to call an order, the Penn Travis School Board meeting of August 10th. Start with flight length.
Flight length is 10,000 feet, under the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever in the name of this God.
So, can you please take roll call for me?
Mrs. Sissin.
Here.
Mr. Patrusi.
Here.
Dr. Costa.
Here.
Mrs. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Nemitz.
Here.
Mr. Patrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stover.
Here.
Dr. Gray.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 8, 2015 meeting?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Sissin. Question. Question being called for, all favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carried. Uh, Mr. Dr. Harris, information?
Yes, we're gonna actually turn that over to start off from Mr. Harris again, who has some guest presenters.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Tonight, before we get started, we have a presentation from two teachers at the high school, Dom Lang and Kara Enick. But in 2009, we had stimulus money that we have given, and instead of some districts, what they did is put that into staffing, we decided to put it into actual programming, knowing that's one-time money, and once that goes away, the staffing will go away unless the district picked it up. So, we put it into programming. And these two ladies were responsible for our transition program at the high school, and they did such a great job that they were actually invited to the transition conference that was held up in State College. I always say this, it's second to none that we have transition program, I almost throw them in their thunder, but we are second to none in Pennsylvania, if not the actual United States of transition, because I have not seen anything that compares to what we have, and it's due to those two ladies. So, as I usually do, is I'll give them all, and get out of the way, let them run their plans.
Thank you. We just want to thank you for allowing us to come in and talking briefly, we won't keep you very long, but we were asked to, we were given the honor of residing at Penn State, as Greg said, this past July, and we did give you guys a copy of our PowerPoint, so you can look through that. Our initial presentation was an hour and a half, so obviously, we're gonna need to condense it quite a bit. We wanted to show you, we figured this would sum up kind of what we tried to accomplish, is, we actually have a video of one of our students describing kind of what he does in the coffee shop, and the things that they learn in the coffee shop. And we showed this video at the presentation, so we figured that would kind of help to kind of sum up what, what we talked about there.
... into students' school days. Most students begin at Coffee for a Cause, our high school coffee shop, where they learn basic job skills and are prepared to move into a job in the community. In addition to job skills, students' math, reading, and communication skills are addressed at Coffee for a Cause. There are several community job placements for students who have mastered skills at Coffee for a Cause. These job placements require more independence and responsibility.
Hello, my name is Alex Pizuela, and I'm about to demonstrate why I do a coffee shop. Whenever I first went to Coffee for a Cause, I take one of these time cards, I actually put the time card in here, and I, when it says in, I press it down, which, and that means I'm punched in. And each, and each of us has our own individual time cards, so each of us can punch in. Okay, so whenever I go into, whenever I go into the coffee shop, I currently go on the cash register right here, and this is where I ramp all the customers, and, like, for example, if I, if I put, so if I put like one regular coffee in the, these, these are the coffees, the cappuccinos, the hot cocoa, water, the teas, and the apple cider, and the places are right here. And these are, and these are the sugars and sweeteners for the, for the coffee. Whenever I had like an order that says like one, there's like one regular coffee, and two sugars, and two sweet loaves, I just put like the, the toll in, in here, and I put the money in here, and pushing cash, and...
Where do you put the slip?
Oh, no, I actually put the slip right here, so the other, so the other employees actually, actually filled the orders. Okay, so here's how you fill, here's how the employees fill out the orders. Like, for instance, if, if the customer gets like one hot chocolate, I like get a cup, and I get one cup, and, and fill this in, and I hold this in for like seven or eight seconds, and, and then, and after that, I put, I put the, if the customer wants like the cream on it, I have to shake it up, and then, and spray it on like so. And if it wants marshmallows, I give the customer marshmallows right, like right here.
Where's the coffee?
Oh, the coffee is, oh, the coffee is right here, and if the customer wants coffee, I get, I get one of these cups out, and I push down on this lever here, which fills the cup up. And, and the customer wants like a sugar, or a creamer, I get, I get like, for example, if I, if the customer wants one, like two of these fresh melon creamers, I get two of these, and if he wants like one of these Slendas, I get one of these. So, here the teas, like, if it, like, let me give you an example. If the customer wants like one regular tea, then I'll give you, then I'll get like one regular tea bag, and then, get a cup. And after that, I have to open the, open the packaging up, and put the tea bag in here, and fill it up with water, like so. Yeah, and after that, I have to put the lid on, and get the sweet, and, yeah, yeah, that's it for the teas. Okay, now, now we're onto the cookies. Like, say, say if the customer wants like, like two short cookies, I'll get them like right here, and I'll pick, I'll pick the cookies out with the napkins, and I'll give the, now, and give the cookies to the customer.
And how do you make cookies?
Okay, so, and here's how you make the cookies. And making the cookies is really hard, like, like, we actually get, we get one of these, these tray, we get one of these containers, which contains the three flavors of cookies, which is chocolate chip, sugar, and M&M. And then, we place, we replace the cookie container right, and then, here's how I do it, I place the cookie container right here, and now I get, oops, I get on one of these trays right here, and I put parchment, I put parchment paper onto the trays, and I put the cookies, and I put the cookies on the tray.
Where do I hang them?
And then, after that, I put, I put each of the trays into the oven, and that's it for the cookies. Well, actually, after, well, actually, after that, I, okay, actually, after that, I press the timer, and after I put the cookies in, I put the, I press the timer one, right, the start and stop one, right here, the timer, so the, so I can, and the cookies will bake for 15 minutes. So, and after the cookies are done, we, we start, we press the button again, and we start the timer, and we start the timer, and then we get the, get the cookies out, and put the sheets on each of these trays.
That's it?
And that's where, that's where I put them to cool off. I actually work in RCW now, and there's actually no, and I only like go to the coffee shop like one period, and like a second period.
But if you work more than one period, do you get breaks?
Well, what the, well, if I work more than one period, I get like, each one's get like a five-minute break.
And how long have you worked in a coffee shop?
Well, I've worked in the coffee shop for like, I, since ninth grade.
And what grade are you in now?
And now, the current grade I'm in right now is 10th grade.
And what's your favorite job in the coffee shop?
Well, I think my favorite job in the coffee shop is working, and the easiest is working at the cash register, which is right here. And I find that really easy, too.
Is there anything else you can say about the coffee shop?
Well, I think, what I think the coffee shop is, I don't think the coffee shop is actually like really bad at all, I mean, I just, I mean, it's not really too stressful, I mean, it's just fine. And, yeah, yeah, in the coffee shop, I actually meet a lot of people there, and they're actually like really nice to me as well. And I really appreciate, I really appreciate how nicely trained you too. Anyways, that's all I have for right now. Anyways, see you.
We'll stop it there, there's a little bit more of the video, but we just wanted to give you an idea of what our kids learned in the coffee shop, and, you know, it's not about making coffee and cookies, it, there's more to it than that, we learn what skills our kids are, you know, that they're good at. And you can see, you know, Alex, some of you might remember him, he was student of the month at the end of the year, last school year, but, you know, Alex started in the coffee shop, and now, he's pretty much training other students how to do the things in the coffee shop that need to be completed. And that's our goal, is to have students do all of the things that happen in the coffee shop. We want other students to train the new students, we want them to do the orders, we want them to work in the cash register. You notice the cash register is similar to something you would see at a sheet, or something like that, you know, just to try to prepare them for work after they leave, after they leave school.
Some of the jobs that have come about from the coffee shop, the skills we had, a student who has been working at Eden Park, it'll be two years actually, in November, and she's a dishwasher at Eden Park, and she's, I mean, she started, she was one of our originals in the coffee shop, and now, she's working independently at Eden Park. We had another student who, you know, he liked baking the cookies, but he wanted to get culinary, and he did a culinary program at Redstone Homes Nursing Home, and he finished a culinary program out there, got his Safe Start test, passed with a 95 percent, and he actually had a job at Just Happy's, however, has actually applied at Nursing Home since then, but, so, just some success stories that we've had with our students, so we're really proud, proud of our students.
We're appreciative of all of your help and support, because it is a very worthwhile cost for students, and they really do enjoy it, and they get a lot out of it.
How do you guys choose the students that work here?
It's the life skills students that go in there, and we do have some learning support students, if they need help with maybe their math skills, we put them on the catchers to, and so, we've had, we had two learning support students who were included in the regular education classes, but during our study, hopefully, they would come down and work in the coffee shop, but mainly, it's life skills students.
That need help with job skills, and just improving that, that's a kind of hands-on opportunity for them to...
And we've also brought up middle school kids to work a period, or a period every day, so they would switch on, you know, every other day, one would come up, just to help with the transition, because once they come to the high school, they'll be, the plan is, would be for them to work in the coffee shop. So, we kind of gradually introduce them, so they're kind of familiar with the equipment, obviously, that was our temporary location, but, yeah, so they get familiar with the equipment, and the things that go on there, and it just helps with that transition.
How long has the program been in business?
Five years.
Five years, yeah. And where do you see it going from here, I'm sure you guys have some ideas on what it would take, take it bigger, or?
I don't, I, I mean, I don't, probably for YouTube, I didn't think that it was ever gonna be, I think when we spoke to Scott early on, I mean, I remember that first conversation, he suggested the library, I mean, I don't think that we ever really envisioned it being like this is happening.
It's really taken off, it's a great, it's a win-win for everybody. These kids benefit tremendously, the student body loves it as well, it's a great opportunity. You know, a lot of schools have modeled what we're doing, and come see us, and try to integrate it, and develop the program, it's very similar to ours, easily, done a great job of developing the program, and great supports it, it's been a great thing, you know, and, you know, there's, there are some things we have under some pressure, or oversight from the federal guidelines, as to what we can do and serve in there, so working through those issues, that could be a challenge to deal with, because, you know, Airmark and us are trying to work that out, and try, how to deal with that, but, you know, we want to expand it, we're gonna have a great new coffee shop that's coming here, it's gonna open up here in another month or so, and it's gonna expand, it's larger, it's bigger, and hopefully, we can have some more offerings, and do some better, bigger and better things.
And that's definitely the plan, I mean, we would love, love to do that, the students are excited, I mean, even some of the, you know, other students at the school, I see them over the summer, they're saying, is the coffee shop gonna be open, is it, are they gonna open it, you know, is it gonna be in the new place, so?
But we've had, we started out by opening up in a day, and now, we're open a whole day, minus the period, but we also do galleries, you know, so.
And you're also leading into, we're looking at scanning, getting scanning capability down administration buildings, to be able to scan all our documents. We have two job coaches, actually, we hired, that actually go down, teach the students to scan, and to spread the documents, and then, we have it chronically. Also, we're looking at the bays with the renovation, to do car detailing, so that would be another thing that we're pushing out for. But we start transition here at age 12, which is two years before you actually have to, when we know students are in lay skills, gives them an extra couple of years of more employee building skills.
So, if you have any other questions, I know we're meeting our limit here, but our emails are in, you know, the PowerPoint, so if you have any questions, or comments, or whatever, your emails.
And if you've ever, if you'd ever like to come up and see the students, feel free, they'd love to have visitors.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next, we have our Student Union Representative, he wasn't here last week, so if you can give your report from last week, and also tell us about your conference that you attended, when you got to that, and that's amazing that you went to that.
Thank you, Dr. Harris, Mr. President. Would you like me to give a presentation first, or about NSLC first?
Give your presentation, and go ahead and have the conference do it.
All right, guys, sorry I wasn't here last week, I did watch the video online, so I'm all caught up with the meetings. So, as you know, one of my goals over the next couple of years is to increase communication about construction, between the people doing construction, and the students, because student reception of construction last year was very negative, there were a lot of negative reactions to construction. So, that being said, I met with the SARO representatives on July the 22nd, to take a tour of the school. I was impressed with the amount of work that's being done, and the work that still needs to be done before, before the beginning of the school year, but I'm sure I can all get taken care of, it's gonna be pretty cool seeing it come together. I plan to keep in contact with Catherine, and others from the SARO, in order to achieve my goal of a straight line of communication between students and what's happening around them. Students are excited to be starting school, freshman elections will occur very early in the school year, I'll announce the winners as soon as they're elected. And I hope and pray that this year will be filled with learning and fun, I know that sounds cheesy, but I really do hope that this year is fun, and that it's filled with a lot of new experiences for everyone. So, just please keep the students of Kentucky in mind, when making your decisions this year, I'm sure all of you will. The reason why I was not here last week is because I was at the National Student Leadership Conference, and, at American University in Washington DC, I learned how to be a diplomat, it was pretty fun, we, it was kind of like nerd camp, but it was all right. I got to take a few, got to listen to lectures done by American University professors, we got to visit the Saudi Arabian Embassy, and talk with the Malaysian ambassador, there were a lot of cool things that we did, got to visit the United Nations in New York, so I had, I had a good time, I think it was worth skipping the meeting, so. Anyway, thank you guys very much, are there any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming on, brave in the heat to be with us. Two of our teachers who we hired last week couldn't be here last week, but they will come tonight, so just wanted to kind of introduce them. First, we have Jamie Ariston, Jamie would be teaching music at Tapper Middle School, National Music Band, and Chelsea Chabot, the three elementary school, the track elementary, which is not a big travel, traveling from Tapper, Level Green, and Sunrise, teaching all the band instrumental lessons. How many years have you taught at the curriculum environment of school?
Three and a half.
Three and a half years. Are you currently at a merge now?
Yes.
Larry, the trick, you were subbing, or?
I was long-term subbing, and flung the keys where Penn helps, and then, before that, taught in Phoenix Arizona, for two years.
What grades was that, were you at Phoenix?
K-3.
Glad to have you. One of the things we've always wanted to do was expand, or, we want to expand our high school band. Interview one, we asked that every single person who walks through the door, what is your plan to expand the high school band? Interview two, she's, she was the only one who came back with a presentation as a follow-up, to say, here is my plan, you asked me about it before, I just wanted to follow up with you, and presented us with a whole entire presentation on how she was gonna expand the high school band, so we appreciate that. And actually, she was hired, was it on Thursday? And you got the call on Thursday, and she found out that there was band camp on the Monday, and never asked her, but low and behold, she showed up, and she was there the whole week, so, thank you so much for doing that, and I think her kids are in good hands. And thank you for coming this week as well. Tara, I wanted to say Raymond, but it's actually Garrary, she married, now I know from Tara. Tara taught in Florida for two years?
Three years.
Three years in Florida, and then, you came back, and before you was in SLA and Level Green, how long did you sub for us?
For, my day-to-day sun is up pretty quick, it's been the last year and a half was off for us.
You were primarily at Level Green?
Level Green, I had a long-term in Tapper.
Everything we've ever asked Tara to do, she's done, she showed up to my foundation, volunteered there, she's a very go-getter, outstanding academic performance, all of our school goals. At the interview, we asked every single person, what are our goals, what are our goals, what are her goals? She nailed them, she was one of the few who just nailed them, and got them right, and had a plan for the goals, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate her working so hard to get this on, so, thank you.
I could just sit personally, I, I had a daughter that, we used Tara as a tutor after school, and she did a great job with her, and it was easy to get her to stay, made her feel special, and that's usually hard to do.
That's half the battle.
Yeah. So, she felt special and staying. I think she caught up, so I appreciate her efforts.
Good leader.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you want to, if you want to stay for the meeting, for the new teacher, that's great, you can meet the board at the end, if you have to, you know, we'll be interested as well. And tonight, I know we talked about the last week, we seen the food allergy updates, I just wanted to read some of the updates we made to apologize. First of all, all food items, of course, are, must be approved, but approved snack list, no homemade items are permitted, I know for a lot of our clubs, we used to always bring in some food for our clubs, but we want to stick to just going through our food vendor. If you need something for your club, and you want to order something special, Airmark would actually do that, so you can actually go through them. And also, a couple of changes with Airmark, we want to make sure if they're gonna be running out of food, they tell the people day in advance, and if you have a menu change, it causes a lot of trouble with the kids, if you go to order something, and you're expecting something, but it's not on the menu the next day when you order it. Some of the older kids, not so much, but the younger kids, it does cause a lot of stress with them, we want to avoid that stress. And especially, a lot of our kids do this because of food allergy reasons, so we want to make sure, or enforce and provide them with a safe, safe meal as well. But that's all I have.
I'll do my last question.
Thank you, Dr. Harris.
If you have a question, try to go see me again, or?
Sure.
What do you want to ask now?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, will there be forums, it'd be a little for clubs, like, will that be announced to clubs?
Yes.
Okay.
Because they're gonna promote it heavily, because I know a lot of your clubs rely on bringing in, you know.
Yes. Start a picnic.
We'll ask it, if you taste, two substitutes for Nick, when you're not here, does anyone remember, or?
Okay.
That's Mr. Leonard.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have any visitors.
Okay, um, thank, thank you, Dr. Harris, normally, we do recognize your visitors, but no one has signed up to speak tonight, so we will move on. May I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report, and the high school extracurricular fund report?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Caccasse, second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of August?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Leonard.
Second.
Second by Mr. Caccasse.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carried. Any old business tonight? Thank you. Tonight, prior to the meeting, we held an executive session to discuss the following: personnel, particularly volunteer background checks, compensation and benefits for non-professional staff, professional employee candidates, paraprofessional candidates. The board also meant to receive information on various matters, including construction expenditures, food service programs, naming rights, football schedule, and construction change orders. Athletics and extracurricular, Dr. Costa.
May I have Mr. President, move to accept the following resignation, Chuck Durst, wrestling coach, Junior High.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sissin. Question. Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the Penn Travis School District's contributions to the area libraries for 2015-16 as follows, as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carried.
Move to employ the athletic and extracurricular personnel for the 2015 school year, as presented to the board, salaries will be determined in accordance with negotiated agreement, new employment is continued upon receipt of all necessary documentation, acceptance of Act 34115, 114 waivers, will commence in Pennsylvania within 30 days, that would be an appendix beating, you know, hopefully.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell. Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carried.
And one more, move to approve the following: volunteer coach, Kelsey Alinsky, volunteer varsity girls assistant soccer coach.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question. Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carried.
That'd be all, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Costa. Budget and finance, Mr. Caccasse.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the expenditures for the high school renovation project for the month of August 2015, according to the schedule as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the school resource officer program agreement for 2015-16, there are no changes from 2014-15.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the Penn Travis School District's contributions to the area libraries for 2015-16 as follows, as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carried.
Before we read number four, just a quick question, do we get the CDS uniforms first?
Oh, I wish we were sent, had a sample product.
But you would wear it in here, Dr. Harris.
I could, I probably could fit in, but.
If you happen to think, well, you could send us a picture. Move to purchase band uniforms for DeMoulin Brothers &amp; Company in Greenville, Illinois, that costs $72,811 to the district, and initial payment of $18,202.75 will be made at the time of purchase, with the remainder of $54,608.25 due after July 1, 2016.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carried.
I just want to remind you, that's take 150 to 180 days to see the whole, to get the uniforms, that's how long it takes, they're all special order, so.
Come on, though. For next year, really.
Yeah, technically, because either, if you think about 150, 180 days, it puts them to pass the semester season.
We'll see them next year, then.
We'll see them next year. We'll see them next year.
I think the last time they got uniforms, they were able to use them at the Memorial Day parade.
Oh, that's how long it took. It must be a standard.
Which has been many years.
Dr. Harris, what's the reputation for band uniforms? Is every term, is that five?
It's about seven to 10 years.
Seven to 10, depending on. So we have some flexibility.
Right. Yeah, and there are different styles of band uniforms. You can go with a cheaper uniform that's lighter and can be replenished every five years or what it lasts 10 years. So I'm not sure what we can select the.
More expensive.
It'll get longer, more years on.
It's, it's going to be nice though.
I'm sure. Okay. Thank you. Move to approve June's revised credit reimbursement amount for $16,776.20 to $24,368.60 to include additional reimbursements to administrators.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Question regarding six. Unfortunately, I was not here last week for items, change orders A, B, C, and D. That was reviewed at last week's meeting?
Yes.
Okay. See if I get this right, right link. Move to approve the following change order request as listed, with the exception of one additional one that wasn't presented last week, and that is the cost of furnishing and installing additional pole out front of the high school for approximately $3,000.
Specifically, it's a light head.
Light head.
The pole will be there, but Wardens is going to add two light heads to, that will match the rest of it. About $3,000.
Second.
So that, you need a second, but yes, that's appropriate.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Newell heard a second. You did hear a second.
Question.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize the Pentraff School District to enter into a mutual written agreement with the lowest responsible good earn where all specifications were met as listed and the amounts indicated for sanitary repairs at Pentraff High School and Shraford Middle Elementary Schools, which were opened at a public session on Monday, July 13, 2015, 11:00 a.m. at the administration building, as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That is all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Koschka. Mr. Chassid, I'm sorry.
Some people call it brothers.
Buildings and grounds and safety. Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one motion I'd like to make. Under that category, I'd like to move to approve the list of substitute custodians for the 2015-16 school year. Copy will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell.
Question. Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. That's all I have under buildings and grounds and safety, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Employee relations, negotiations, and transportation, that is me. Move to approve the list of bus drivers and substitutes as presented by first student for the 2015-16 school year. A copy will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Always on the subject of the busing, just a reminder to everyone that the postcards should be mailed out Wednesday for the bus drops. The postcards, I think the kids and the parents look forward to receiving the bus notifications. And it also helps us because sometimes we send out one that's incorrect, and I'd rather fix it two weeks before school versus first day of school.
Food service, Mr. Stohr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the list of cafeteria personnel for the 2015-16 school year as presented by Airmark Education. A copy will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chassid.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to adopt the following resolution by the Board of School Directors for the 2015-16 school year with regard to the free and reduced lunch program. We have resolved that the Pentraff School District agrees to participate in the national school lunch program and to receive commodities donated by USDA and accepts the responsibility for providing free and reduced priced meals in accordance with the Pennsylvania Department of Education guidelines to eligible children in all schools under the district's jurisdiction.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chassid.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve Turner Dairy as a milk supplier for the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Question.
Second by Mr. Newell.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Personnel and curriculum. Mr. Leonard, would you please go in for Mr. Christie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a number of motions under that category. I'll start off with making a motion. The following administrator will be designated official raiders of professional personnel at Pentraff School District for the 2015-16 school year. Dr. Matthew Harris, Mr. Scott Inglese, Mr. Gregor Carcia, Tony Fuglio, Mr. Greg Capitcioni, Mrs. Karen Coynor, Mr. Daniel Dean Napoli, Mr. Joseph A. Marastin Jr., Mr. Greg Sarasini, Mr. Jim Simpson, Mr. Roger Sullivan, and Mr. Jeff Schwartz.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dr. Koschka.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like to move to approve the teacher assignments for the 2015-16 school year as recommended by the administration. A copy of the assignments will be filed with the official minutes. The administration further authorized to notify teachers of their permanent assignments in accordance with the negotiated agreement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chassid.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like to move to approve the list of substitute teachers and support personnel for the 2015-16 school year. A copy will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Taken.
Second by Dr. Koschka.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like to move to issue professional contracts to the following teachers in accordance with Section 1108 of the school laws of Pennsylvania. These teachers have satisfactorily completed three years of teaching in Pentraff School District. Katie Datz, Denise Doyle, Lisa Canoka, Nicholas Lynn, Maria MacArthur, Eric Reader, Heather Skavinski, Amber Urick, Leah Wentrow, and Jamie Whitick.
Second.
Second by Dr. Koschka.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Not to interrupt again, but it's, it's hard to believe when you see the names that they've been here three years. So fast. I mean, time flies. The 10 teachers listed there have all brought a lot of great things to Pentraff. Worked very hard. And I don't want to take time to go through each and every one of the names, but I'm very proud of all of them. Like I said, three years, that flies. It really does. Like a blink of an eye, it's we're here. So thank you.
Thank you. I would like to move to approve the following nine leave requests as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like to move to approve the following sabbatical leave request for Jill Hauck, learning sabbatical for second semester of 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zissin.
Question.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like to move to employ the following personnel. New employment is contingent. Primary receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Act 34151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. There are four special education classroom instructional aids and, sorry, but I didn't copy these. 10 student learning assistants, two super substitutes, three long-term subs, effective eighth, 24, 15, one lunchroom aide, and they all are as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like to move to approve the student handbooks for the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chassid.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like move, move to accept the revised retirement date for Deborah Edgelson from May 28, 2015 to August 11, 2015.
Second.
Second by Dr. Koschka.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like to move to approve the following textbooks for the 2015-16 school year that are in the textbook budget according to the textbook cycle. The title, "Psychology AEP", published by Pearson, copyright 2015. Grade level 12, class AP. Psychology costs $6,316.38.
Taken.
Second. Second by Mr. Chassid.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like to move to approve early admission for the following student. This student has met all early admissions requirements. Student number EA20151601, kindergarten at Level Green Elementary School.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chassid.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like to move to approve the following intern practicum placements for the fall semester of 2015-16. Eastern University cooperating professional, Blahovik Mark Markadinsky, intern Lisa Popovich, area school nursing practicum, dates fall semester 100 hours. California University of Pennsylvania cooperating professional, Jeffrey Schwartz, intern Andrea Frescura, area principal intern, dates fall semester.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zissin.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Well, since I don't have the lustrous goodie report for the group here, that's all I have for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Policy Public Relations Legislative Panel to Mr. Newell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept the following minutes. The Superintendent's Information Committee meeting held on Monday, June 1, 2015.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to adopt policy number 709.1 and administrative regulation number 709.1-AR-0 entry onto school property and into school buildings.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chassid.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to adopt the fol, the following revised documents as administrative regulations on food allergies, medication guidelines, and clinical guidelines for anal access.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chassid.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Number four is what happens when you're not here. Move to appoint Dr. Jay Trey, his PSBA voting delegate for the 2015-16 school year.
Before we close that motion, is there anything else we could put in line?
Yeah, no kidding.
Second.
Question. Second by Mr. Chassid.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.